Regroup after the...
Cool, I mean, I'm fine.
Good morning, everyone.
Good evening.
It's kind of early, but we need to make this change quickly here. Get me out of here. But again, thanks for coming to support these folks who have sworn in this morning. I want to start off with just saying thank you to each one of them for their willingness to serve. I know it's a great honor, but it's a great responsibility as well. So thank you for putting yourself out there to be able to serve the community of Jacksonville. But family and friends that are here to watch them get sworn in, thank you for your support. I know you're very proud of these folks, and I know they're going to do a great job. So thank you for sharing them with the city of Jacksonville. I know there can be those times when it's conflicting between what the family's doing and what they're having to do for the city. I've experienced some of those, so be patient with them. And all I'm dedicated is to their job and going to do their very best for you. So again, just thank you for being here, and I'll go ahead and turn this over to probably the other... Sherry, did I almost forget her first name? But we're happy you're here to do this where it is, everyone. Thank you very much. I understand we're going to have refreshments and stuff back to that, and that you've reteach folks and congratulate them. So again, thanks for everything.
Good morning, you all. And thank you, Mayor Smith. It's an honor to be here this morning, and I'm looking forward to getting everyone sworn in and letting y'all get boots on the ground and get busy doing what you're elected to do. Good morning. Repeat after me. I...
Aye.
Mark Jones.
Mark Jones.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And honestly discharge...
And honestly discharge...
The duties and responsibilities...
The duties and responsibilities...
Of the office of the mayor of the City of Jacksonville...
Of the office of the mayor of the City of Jacksonville...
Alabama...
Alabama.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And Mr. Green. Good morning, pretty girl. How are you? Good morning. Are you?
I...
Aye.
Andrew Green.
Andrew Green.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
And that I will faithfully and honestly...
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge...
The duties and responsibilities of the office of city council...
The duties and responsibilities of the office of city council...
Place one of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
Place one of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Terry Wilson. I, Terry Wilson...
I, Terry Wilson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
And that I will faithfully...
I will faithfully...
And honestly...
Honestly.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities...
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of city council...
Of the office of city council.
Place two...
Place two.
Of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
Of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mr. Newell.
Good morning. I, James Newell...
I, James Newell.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
That I will faithfully and honestly...
That I will faithfully and honestly...
Discharge the duties and responsibilities...
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of city council...
Of the office of city council.
Place three of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
Place three of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Lester.
I, Sherry Lester...
I, Sherry Lester...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And honestly...
And honestly.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
And responsibilities...
And responsibilities.
Of the office of the city council...
And the office of the city council.
Place four of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
Place four of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And Marcus Green.
I, Marcus Green...
I, Marcus Green.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama...
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
So long as I continue a citizen thereof...
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And honestly discharge...
And honestly discharge...
The duties and responsibilities...
The duties and responsibilities.
Of the office of city council...
Of the office of city council.
Place five of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama...
Place five of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Green. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, everybody, for coming on behalf of the city council. We appreciate all y'all being here on this important day in the start of a new city council and mayor. But I won't be amiss if I did not congratulate John Smith for the excellent job he did. Twenty-one years as mayor, thirty-two years overall serving this community. Let's give him another... All right, we're going to take a short break of reception, and then we're going to have our organizational council meeting. We've got coffee, hopefully some biscuits. Jack's kitchen went, their power went out, so we might have some biscuits out there, but we got doughnuts and coffee. So grab some refreshments and just nick and mingle and congratulate these folks on serving another term.
Let us pray.
Gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this day in the name of all names, in the name of your Son Jesus. Thanking you, Lord, for the gift of our government here in Jacksonville, for the transition for the new persons who will be serving on the council or mayor. We also thank you, Father, for our police officers, our fire responders, and those who serve at emergency services. We thank you for your grace to this Lord, and until you carry us home to heaven, thank you that you've given us this very special place in Jacksonville. Lord, for your glory and honor and praise, we give you our thanks through your son Jesus, our Lord and our prayer.
Applause.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. A. Green?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Ms. Laster?
Here.
Mr. M. Green?
Here.
To the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion of the council presidents to have nominations for the president of the council.
I make a motion to nominate Terry Wilson, council president.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now Terry, I'm handing the meeting over to you.
Thank you. All right, moving according to our agenda, we need to have an election of our council president pro tem. The floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Ms. Laster, Councilwoman Laster.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Bert, are you ready to read?
I am. Consider action to ratify the use of present depositories for municipal funds and to Consider action to ratify the use of present depositories for municipal funds until such time as the council shall permanently designate such depository and approve standard bank resolutions for every city and waterworks gas and sewer board accounts.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll move.
Okay, you move?
Yeah, I'll make a move.
Okay, he's gonna move.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay. All right, Ms. Bert, number nine.
Consider action to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven three dash twenty six, amending section two dash twenty six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. All right, item ten.
Consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven three dash twenty six, amending section two dash twenty six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Anybody move?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now, Madam Clerk, you said that we would need to have a roll call on suspending. Is this included in that?
Suspending under green.
Roll call, please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Item number ten.
So eleven is consider action to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven four dash twenty six, amending section two sixty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? So there's nine.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Number twelve?
Consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven four dash twenty six, amending section two dash sixty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Bert.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Thirteen?
Consider action to suspend the rules for the immediate consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven five dash twenty six, amending section two dash seven seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster? Yes. Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Number fourteen?
Consideration of ordinance number zero dash six seven five dash twenty six, amending section two dash seventy seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Motion?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All right, any discussion about it? And this should be our final roll call, correct? Okay.
Mr. A. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Newell?
Yes.
Ms. Laster?
Yes.
Mr. M. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Item fifteen, please, ma'am.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two sixty eight dash twenty six, appointing Brenda Long as city clerk of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Number sixteen, Ms. Bert.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two sixty nine dash twenty six, appointing Scott Calhoun as city treasurer of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, say nay. Number seventeen, please, ma'am.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy dash twenty six, appointing Marcus Wood as police chief of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
So moved.
That's good. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against? Okay. Consider, okay, eighteen.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy one dash twenty six, appointing Keith Cadel as fire chief of the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. Okay. Number nineteen, please, ma'am.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy two dash twenty six, appointing Richard Ray as city attorney for the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. Number twenty, please, ma'am.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy three dash twenty six, appointing William J. Miller, P.C. Law Firm, as public defender for the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. Number twenty one?
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy four dash twenty six, appointing Jason C. Odom as municipal judge for the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. Number twenty two, Ms. Bert.
Consideration of resolution number R dash twenty two seventy five dash twenty six, appointing Richard Ray as city prosecutor for the City of Jacksonville, Alabama.
All right, I would like to make a recommendation to the council that we continue where we are right now and then have time to discuss disposition and then make an appointment later on, if everyone is good with that. I'd like just to table, not table it, but just, Richard would stay in the position he's in now until we have time to discuss. Everybody good with that? Okay. All right, Ms. Bert, number twenty three.
Consider action to approve that all administrative officers and employees of the municipality shall continue in their respective positions.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. All right, number twenty four, Ms. Bert.
Consider action to authorize the mayor or his designee, as provided in writing, to approve purchases, travel requests, and execute contracts up to seventy five hundred dollars without prior authorization by the city council.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Twenty five, Ms. Bert.
Consider action to authorize an expense account for the mayor in the amount budgeted each fiscal year by the council.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any against, nay. All right, do we have any other businesses that need to be brought to the council before we adjourn?
I'd like to say I appreciate y'all's confidence in me, and I look forward to working with the new council, the new mayor, new Jacksonville board, and our department. We've got a lot of things in the cooking right now that I think will make us much better as we move forward, so I just look forward to working with all of y'all and the new mayor to move Jacksonville forward.
Thank you. Chief Yu and Chief Wood and both of your staffs, our job's here to make y'all successful. I know the mayor feels the same way. We value what y'all do, and you don't get enough credit, so thank you for saying that, and we look forward to working with y'all. Anyone else? That being said, I will entertain an adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
It's in the books.
If anybody's gonna be...